Our first speaker tonight was going to be Amanda Havas. And Amanda has traded with Harry's hair. So is Harry here?
Um, no, technically, we ask that people don't trade their time. But I think that technically what we ask is that they don't give their time to another. I'm reading back, cannot give their time to another speaker. So.
I'll keep it, and I can explain.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. I appreciate seeing you there. That is very helpful. We don't have the split hairs here.
Yeah, okay, hold on a second.
You can always bring somebody up with you, Amanda.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Rachel's so helpful. Okay. I got an email today saying, "You got accepted." And last month, I didn't, and I said, "It's the next time I will." And I forgot that I said that. So it was a surprise. So I've been thinking about this thing. And I'll start my dream in a timer right here. I'll tell you my whole life story. Okay, not making sense. I'd love to acknowledge that it's Autism Awareness Month and just celebrate all that we are doing right here. Um, I have a friend who is just turned 40, and she was diagnosed with autism in the last year. And it took her forever to get diagnosed with that because it's very sometimes difficult to diagnose, and oftentimes especially women. So what I do want to say is that I really feel like we're doing some things very well currently in our school district, in our country, in our state. We're far beyond where we used to be 20 years ago in education. So I just do want to acknowledge that. Um, let's see what else. My dad, along with a line of gratitude, uh, my dad, when my son, um, Ollie, was born, he has special needs, and it was, you know, life for guys for a while, and all these hard things. He said, "I'm just so glad that he was born in America." And my dad travels a lot to, to different countries that have a lot of different perspectives on how to handle special needs or disabilities and stuff like that. And so in the countries that he's been going to, you know, my child would just be on the streets. And so again, um, I think we're doing a really good job in some ways here that is, uh, we can celebrate, even though we're talking about lots of difficult and hard things. Um, continuing on, the special education in mind. Um, as you guys are trying to figure out what it's going to look like in the next school year, and there's lots of budget things coming up and a lot of decisions to be made on how to do things. Um, I would really propose that you use your hearts and your minds, sometimes even more than like all of the fancy words that are coming out a lot right now. Like, I feel like we could argue over a lot of words, um, and what they mean and how they go. Um, for one, the, the term equity. Um, Ollie, he only was allowed to go to school for four days a week during a lot of the lockdown and the COVID situation. It's because there weren't enough students to be in his classroom. I spoke about this back then. And I was begging everybody, like, "Can you just open up any of the life skills classes that do have the staff to be there?" Because I understand there's equity at stake, and not everybody can be there, you know? And so it's not fair, but like honestly, some people need to go to work. So what I'm saying for the heart and the mind thing is like, I know that we have to go by systems and rules, and it's good. But in any moment where we, like, it's a very crucial moment, I would ask that you would use like the humanity and like those parts of you where you can think through a situation and be more creative and think with your community members in order to problem solve. Because I would have given up my, uh, you know, Ollie's spot. Like, we would have done school at home to support other people being in the classroom that needed to go to work or that didn't have the resources at home to really support their kids. So I have to think about all these things. I would just really encourage all, a lot of community, um, participation and listening to community members. And even stuff like, when I get done with this thing, like, "Hey, that, you know, interesting thought, Amanda," versus just silence, which I know is part of the rule. But like, I think that should change.
Amanda. Thank you so much. Interesting thoughts. We appreciate it.
I know you buy chairs, so can I get a personal seat? As in, can we get chairs for the people? I'm just thinking about chairs.
Thank you. Does that mean that better back there standing up? Okay.
Um, yes, Angela Bitterin, who is ready to speak, will be the next speaker.
I also asked you to turn the, um, yeah, I'm getting notes that they can't see the speaker. And can you, you can see yourself if you flip it off a little?
Well, if I just help you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angela Bitterin. I'm a professor speaker, and I teach high school social studies at Eugene Online Academy. On the day after the 4J Neurodiversity Fair, staff at EOA were notified that we would be cut five FTE, which is a third of our program. The timing was ironic because 45% of our students at secondary level have a 504 or an IEP, and the majority of those are for supports for neurodivergence. I have the impression that not very many people outside of EOA have much familiarity with what we do. So tonight, I want to share a few things that I think are important for you to be aware of. First and foremost, we provide a safe learning environment for students that don't find safety in the birth and water experience. During the pandemic, COVID was the primary safety concern that drove students to us. But this year, it has become clear that we now serve students that are in crisis with their mental health, disabilities, family, and housing. We are the only school choice alt ed and the only alt ed option for middle schoolers. Students choose us because of our flexible learning model, gives students the ability to naturally circumnavigate the systemic barriers that prevent a fair, appropriate, and least restrictive environment. We have a chance to build a safe space and a positive connection, and students need this first and foremost, as you've heard from your student reps, say time and time again. Not only does our program support the educational learning needs of students fully online, but we're increasingly becoming an option for students wanting hybrid and pre-recovery. The content that we teach is from FuLeD, which no one likes. It's stressful to navigate for students and expensive for the district. I could talk a lot about this for a while. But the important information that you know is that everyone would benefit from having that money allocated for supporting teachers and totes to create campus courses that align with the rest of the district. Campus construction is not just a preference, but our legal responsibility. There is no camp curriculum that you can purchase that will be in compliance with Samuel 13 and other laws. And I personally believe that diverse representation in our curriculum is violence and suicide prevention. I teach economics and my partner's in accounting, so I understand the difficult choices that need to be made in the budget. We have a limited amount of resources, and everyone has a need. But something else that I know is that numbers represent people. For the people at EOA, this is a devastating, touchman, essential program. I thank you for listening, but I want to end on a personal note. I myself am neurodivergent. Since living in the birth and water environment, I've been publicly recognized for my excellence and value to my community of speech online, and I never was in person. Nothing about me has changed, except the environment I'm in. I've always had this feeling, just no one saw it so vividly without my disability getting in the way. I think my students feel the same way about themselves. Please help my students continue to be in the environment that they thrive in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bitterin. Our next speaker is Chelsea Harbath.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Harbath. Hello, my name is Chelsea Harbath, and I am a parent of a junior at North Eugene High School and a seventh grade student at Kellington High School. Tonight, you'll be voting to close a chapter in North's history. As a graduate of North Eugene High School, it is bitter streak to hear that the building is in such disrepair that it would take around $30 million to renovate all the deferred maintenance. Ironically, that is the approximate cost that buildings such as YG Corridor would cost to replace. The building at 250, 250 Silverly Lane, potentially the old, um, oh, sorry. Um, there's a blue there, Old North Eugene. So the burden is on my heart. I have had numerous meetings over the years, listening, learning, questioning, and now creating the loss of both of these buildings. I find myself questioning why. Why does this all hurt so bad? As I boil it down, I came to the realization, and I apologize if I cry. Home is where the heart is. As a graduate of North Eugene High School, I walked my senior year over to a classroom at Corridor Elementary School. I volunteered in the classroom where there was two Japanese courses, one in English, one in Japanese. Little did I know, approximately, 20 years later, my kids would be walking down the hall of Kelly Middle School, volunteering their time in the Japanese immersion program. Schools are not just buildings, they're homes. They are places where we spend the majority of our lives. They are places where our identities are developed and grown. Moreover, they are places where friendships are established. Many of those friendships for me are parents, staff, that are sitting back behind me. We celebrate schools when they're open, but what do we do when we lose them, or when they are closed, or when they are lost? Personally, the Old North is an ideal place for housing a middle school program, or program like Kelly Middle School. Old North has a culinary witch shop, has the ability for growth, things that are needed right now at Kelly Middle School. But they are unable to do that. Kids, if they were good to go to Kelly Middle School at the Old North building, but have the ability to walk to the New North for advanced math. Currently, I got an email yesterday saying, "If you take advanced math, you will take it online. There won't be an impetus for you to do so." Thus, I have these requests. Now I need to, wait. This is, it will be made to abolish all of that. There is a commitment for YG program at the North Eugene region. Sending north to the South Region is not acceptable. The district wants to uphold this belief in diversity, equity, inclusion, suggesting the move of a program that has a second highest minority enrollment to an elementary school in the district is not allowed. Additionally, YG also reflects in their staff racial diversity that houses its students. 60% of the students at YG are from the North Eugene region. Make YG a neighborhood school, Lake River Road Elementary School. It's a neighborhood school, and families are given the opportunity to join. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bitterin. Our next speaker tonight is Jen Thorgland.
Hey, so I'm an EOD teacher at YG. Uh, I want to remind those listening to this of the comments saying, "What planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part." Yet this is in fact what is happening to both the schools at the 850 Howard site. The district decided to demolish the Silverly site that housed YG and squeeze us into the 850 Howard site with Kelly, despite the fact that the staff at both schools did not think that it would give either school enough room, that it would require that we eliminate or handicap aspects of our programs, and would ultimately prevent both schools from any future growth. Now the board is deciding what to do with the Old North Eugene High School site. While a survey went out in a district newsletter, the district has not done its due diligence to survey the families in the North Region whom this will most directly impact. The district's info heavily placed the focus on the financial benefit of destroying Old North Eugene High School and emphasizing how this would make it equitable for the new North Eugene High School to have two turf soccer fields, so it would be more comparable to the green space of the other 4J high schools. Equity of green space is important, and no one wants to deny any students this. But even student athletes are students first and athletes second. What about equity of educational space for everyday use at the 850 Howard site, so that learning can happen? The information that the district did send out with the survey did not even mention that destroying the Old North building would mean that YG would have to be permanently housed with Kelly Middle School in a building that is too small and older than the Old North Eugene High School building it wants to demolish. Nor did it mention that they want to move YG completely across town to another site that was not built to last long term. Nor was the inequity of moving a program across town from the lower socioeconomic minority region to the more affluent white area brought up in the district's information with the survey. This needs to be considered, especially with only 5% of YG families in the South Area and the majority of our families stating that they will not be able to attend YG if it is moved to Willard. Only two members of the board have attended the numerous meetings Kelly and YG have been having to solve the current issue of space between the two schools. Before the board votes on this huge decision, I would like three things. I invite the whole board to tour the 850 Howard site with representatives from both YG and Kelly during the school day to see what the reality of the situation is and understand what both schools have lost and are attempting to make work as a result of this co-location. Number two, I would also like district to work with both schools and North Eugene High School staff to create a survey to formally gather input from all the families with students attending schools in the North Region whom this affects, so that the board can hear their voices and ideas before making this monumental decision. Three, at the very least, I am inviting the board to temporarily table the vote until they have more information and a better understanding of the larger picture of what demolishing the Old North Eugene High School building means for the rest of the North community.
Kelly DeAndrea will be our next speaker tonight. Is Kelly here? Okay, we approach the next speaker. Who is Kelly Stroh.
So I want to say that any good speech should have evidence. So I teach my fifth graders. This is Ty O'Var, Kami. He is one of our fifth graders at Eugene Gakuen. So he's just giving you a little bit of perspective. Can you collect yourself? Uh, I'm Kelly Stroh. I'm a parent and a teacher at Eugene Gakuen. And I want to start by telling you a little history of Eugene Gakuen. Thanks, Hannah. It was started 33 years ago. It was the first ever Japanese immersion school in the United States. It was housed with Corridor in this Silverly building. It was a beautiful building with murals and giant flower and cherry trees, which the children had picnics under every spring. It wasn't perfect, but it was home, and the children and staff all worked together to create a welcoming and inclusive community. Back in 2017, the school district representatives came to talk to the Eugene Gakuen community. They informed the YG families and staff that they were running for a bond. If the bond passed, they would be rebuilding the new North Eugene High School on the site that Eugene Gakuen currently sets. We fought. We went to every board meeting en masse and told why this was a terrible idea. Kelly Middle School was already in the building. It wouldn't fit in just one side. The school district told us their enrollment was very low. We argued that North Eugene had tons of housing growth in the area and would bring more families and more students. They told us they looked at the predicted numbers, and no big growth was occurring. The middle school is continuing to grow. Middle schools wicked this space, they said. We fought. We were told this would be temporary, only three to five years. Three to five years would give enough time to build the new high school building. Once the new building was built, either Kelly Middle School or Eugene Gakuen could move into the Old North Eugene building. We fought. We fought about every part of what they said, and we were told it would all work out. Just trust us. Ultimately, we want to stay in the North End. We have, we want our own space. We are picky on where we are or what that space is. But over 60% of our families are from the North Region of town. We had a home. We were made unhoused by the district. We were placed in a temporary housing situation with promise of a new home, only to be told we may no longer have a home where our families and people live. YG has the highest minority enrollment of any, uh, second highest of any in Eugene. You guys talk about diversity and equity. This is a diversity and equity issue. We look at the 2018 deferred maintenance. You'll find that in there. Um, needs from the facility's long-range maintenance plan. If you look at the chart on page 59, it states Churchill would cost 15.4 million of deferred maintenance, South Eugene 17.4 million, Sheldon 19.4 million, and lastly, North Eugene at only 13.2 million. Then why is the North Eugene building the only one that's being shut down and rented? Told it can't be occupied. And why was it acceptable for Corridor to move in there? And where did we get the 34,000 or 34 million? What's the point of all this? We want transparency from the district. We've had nothing but empty promises, and this has created tension between two communities, Kelly and YG, that used to work together. You've displaced us, and we want to know why you can find money for a bid for EWEB, but not for students. We want to know, we want a conference that lists all. You guys said it's code violations. We want a conference that lists all the code violations before you choose to demolish a school. So we just want transparency. It's not happening. Thank you.
Mario Reyes is our next speaker tonight.
Good evening. My name is Mario Reyes. I am the father of a YG student and also a Kelly Middle School student. For the past few years, as we've worked through the co-location of the two schools, we've seen a lot of hard work, some a little frustration, some wins, and some level of emotion. And a lot of that emotion comes from the fact that we're fighting for our kids, we're fighting for our students. And I think you can understand. But one of the pieces of emotion that I've observed that's out there is because it feels like we are working against the board or against the administration while we're advocating for our kids. And so what I'm asking for you tonight is to please be an advocate for our students, work with us if we find a good solution for the kids, for the school, for the community. Now, I understand you're going to be working towards making an important decision tonight regarding the state of the North Eugene High School. And as I saw on the local newspaper, Jen McCulley, your communications director, created a poll to get public information regarding that. So I took a look at that poll today at 3:00 PM. There's about 2,629 ratings and 112 different ideas in public input. So with that poll, you're getting a much broader range of public input during the hearing from here up here tonight. And I'll summarize that. The number one top rated item on there, the statement on there is, "Please consider the growing deficit in classroom space for North Eugene students and compare to that in other areas of town." YG and Kelly need space. A lack of space of decreasing interest in the YG program is hindering both schools. It will force the end of the immersion program long term. There's many more responses like that, but for the sake of time, I'll summarize. Every one of the top 32 rated responses referencing addressing the YG-Kelly situation and fuelizing the North Eugene building for students and solving that problem, not tearing that building down for equity and for the North Eugene community. The lowest, the bottom ranked answer on there refers to demolishing the building and turning it into field space for other use. So again, 2,629 ratings. It's very compelling data. And with that, here are my two pieces of input for consideration. One, use public data as your input as you work towards that decision. Please don't contribute to the perception that you look for input from public data and then decide to go do something different. Number two, please fight for us, for the kids in the North Eugene region in YG and Kelly. Don't move our local immersion schools to another area of the city that gives higher-income families better access to it, including the North Eugene students have the disadvantage, right? Fight for the equity of that region. And, you know, for YG's sake, please don't enable a decision that gives that school's hallway away. That would be crippling the YG school. Enabling that decision would be enabling the crippling of that school. Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Michael Bratton.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Michael Bratton. I'm a father of five, two which still go to Sheldon High School. I'm a foster parent, two raising children. I'm a father, or a husband, of a public school teacher and a graduate of Churchill High School. I'm here because I'm a concerned parent. I'm worried that with all the school shootings around the country, 4J is unprepared because we no longer have school resources, or resource officers at our schools. As a parent, we have a right to demand that our children are protected while at school. Some, some of you on the board were part of removing resource officers from 4J schools. Let's not wait for something horrible to happen before we act. It's time to realize that a mistake was made and that we should fix it. Let's bring back resource officers to our schools immediately. Also, I want to remind you that you were, that you were voted in by parents and community members to represent our wishes. You cannot ignore us, you cannot, you cannot ignore us when we demand to see and understand what our kids are being taught in the classroom. Our children do not belong to you, the government, nor anyone else. They are our responsibility. And last, we expect our school board to act professional and work together in harmony, harmony, instead of what we see every month. Constant bickering, name-calling, and lack of focus. It's embarrassing and needs to stop. Focus on, focus on education, period. Think about what your lack of cohesiveness is teaching our kids. As a school board, it is your responsibility to ensure that the concerns of parents are not only heard, but promptly acted upon. There's little evidence that you actually ever listen to parents, and it's time that you start. We're heard tonight from students about lack of communication on new schedules and from parents about lack of communication on the old school, North Eugene High School. And this needs to, needs to stop. So I'm asking you, as a concerned parent, push your personal agendas aside and start listening to parents. If you, if you did just that, our schools, our school district would be an amazing place for all of us, especially our kids. It's time to focus on education and getting those math and reading scores up and our kids feeling successful again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bratton. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Sarah Bear Reed, followed by Stupia Lance.
Good evening, members of the board, 4J families and staff, and all of the YG supporters behind me, especially. My name is Sarah Bear Reed, and I am the proud mother of two Eugene Gakuen Elementary School students, Harper, a fourth grader, and Penelope, a kindergartner, as well as an English and writing educator with over 13 years of teaching experience, now serving the amazing students and community at Sheldon High School for the last two. Four years ago, we, as parents, sat on the benches in the YG Corridor lunchroom as school board members and bond measure advocates sold us, parents and staff, a story. They sold us the story that we supported and rallied our region to pass the bond. We were going to have to give up our school site, but we would still be nearby once the old building was fixed. We cried and we fought. YG was our home and has been a part of my own personal family for over 20 years. Takako Sensei and all the other teachers and volunteers are friends, allies, and guardians of our children. But we looked into the future and seeing the building falling apart and space decreasing with increasing enrollment numbers, finally agreed. We got on board, helped the North Region pass the bond. I know these conversations happened because I was a PTO board secretary for every single one of them. So this is how I understand it. The district's idea is to not only bulldoze the gem that is our nation's first Japanese immersion program, but to secretly and permanently close another elementary school without warning, after the bond was passed, of course, leaving Corridor families scrambling and neighborhood schools jammed beyond capacity, and finally, to bulldoze the now North Eugene High School old school in order to put in turf fields. Grass. Let me explain what the message you are sending to our community sounds like. 4J believes fake grass is more important than the legacy of our immersion program, its students, and our Japanese community and people. 4J believes fake grass is more important than having equity in the placement of our robust immersion programs between all regions of our town. 4J believes fake grass is more important than the education of current and future North Eugene area students, giving zero regard to class sizes, accommodations, and access to a free and equitable education in comparison to other regional schools. 4J believes that fake grass is more important than the support and opportunities that our immersion program offers to our district's ELL populations as well as our North Region BIPOC students and those in poverty. 4J believes fake grass is more important than honoring their own words and promises they made to our and your constituents. Whomever told you that this idea was successful was tone deaf. And quite honestly, there maybe needs to be more education on the past relationships between white leaders in the state and their policies with the Japanese people. This decision reeks of inequity and racial and economic privilege, especially when we move to the South Region, removes now two elementary schools from this region all at the very same time, that hundreds of homes and apartments are now being built in our region. To call this short-sighted is an understatement. To wrap up, as a high school teacher, we hear weekly about the need and urgency that we must attend to our students regarding the dividing bridge between students of color and other vulnerable groups in order to try and help our students not fall through the cracks, help them find a connection and a desire to be at school to finish their education instead of disconnecting or giving up. Students need to be honored and seen for the diverse gifts they hold in order to belong. The problem here is that programs like that at YG don't matter as much as turf fields, it seems to you, that BIPOC diversity, languages, and culture don't matter as much as athletes at a high school. So why should they even try? Treatment towards YG confirms that it's all a lie anyway, that you say the words belonging and equity, but you don't mean it. It's a lie wrapped up in green. Green turf, green money. What a legacy you're illustrating to the community. Green is really the only color that matters.
Thank you, Sarah Bear. And our last speaker tonight is Sophia Lance. Sophia here? Yes, that concludes our speakers tonight.
I want to say thank you to everyone who came and spoke. We really appreciate the community input and having the chance to hear from you. invaluable and will definitely come into play when we make our decisions. So thank you. I appreciate you being here and signing up to speak. Just taking a moment to process, there was a lot of emotion, and I appreciate you sharing your raw feelings with us. So next up on the agenda are comments by employee groups. Tonight, we have Sabrina Gordon from EEA signed up to speak. If you would like to start, Sabrina.
Thank you, Maya. My name is Sabrina Gordon, and I am the president of Eugene Education Association. It's been a busy year, and it's a little hard to believe that there are only about eight weeks remaining. One of the projects we focused on this year has been planning for a new high school schedule. It's been a collaborative effort between the district and EEA, beginning with identifying shared values that include improving access, opportunity, and support for students we have not historically served well. Other shared values are providing all students with more opportunities for enrichment and academic support, more time for educators to collaborate, and promoting positive relationships for students and staff. During the planning efforts this year, 4J and the EEA have collaborated to create meaningful space for educator voice to inform decisions. 4J has supported this work with compensation for dozens of educators who have participated on committees to discuss options and forward recommendations to district leaders. Throughout this work, EEA has called for clear communication, the same thing we heard requested tonight from two of our student board members. We ask for communication about why this change is happening, how the chosen schedule will meet each of the shared values, and how educators will be supported in making this enormous transition. But with only eight weeks to go, it is very clear that our members have not received adequate communication. We don't yet know the purpose of Flex Day. We don't yet understand how we'll be providing interventions or extensions. Educators still need to talk through concerns about having less instructional time to cover content. There's conflicting information about how the schedule will work for part-time staff. There are concerns about having three different lengths of periods within each week, and there are many, many other questions. With only eight weeks left, it's hard to imagine how this information will be adequately communicated in time for educators to process it all and feel confident about next year. So tonight, EEA is repeating two suggestions that we previously made. First, district leaders need to go talk with educators. This needs to happen immediately and consistently until teachers feel informed and confident enough to tackle this huge change. Leaders also need to listen to educators to understand the challenges presented by this change and the support we'll need from you. And second, seriously consider starting next year with a simpler version of the new schedule. Understand and acknowledge that shifting to a block schedule is a big enough change to tackle next year without all the other complexities we're trying to add in. Many details have potential, but remain nebulous at this very late date. EEA has worked hard to be collaborative in this process, but our repeated calls for transparent and consistent communication have not yet been honored, and the resulting anxiety is hampering the likelihood that we'll be able to successfully pull this off in time for next year. Educators want this to be successful for students, and we need your support in making that possible.
Sabrina, next up is Seth Faflin from MAPS.
We do thank Lloyd Chiverabasa, school board members, Superintendent Dyke, and everyone in the listening audience tonight. My name is Seth Faflin, and I'm the president of MAPS. As most of you know, MAPS is our Eugene School District Employee Group that represents our 4J managers, administrators, professionals, and supervisors. One of my favorite parts of MAPS is that we use a substantial chunk of member dues to fund annual scholarships at each of our 4J high schools. In fact, these scholarships are the biggest budget item for MAPS. This year, we are proudly sponsoring a $1,000 scholarship at each of the five high schools, North, South, Churchill, Sheldon, and I know. Our focus for these $1,000 scholarships is for first-generation college attendees. This morning, we sent out MAPS scholarship information and the applications to staff in each high school. May nineteenth is the deadline to apply for these scholarships. On May twenty-sixth, the MAPS board will review the applications and select the recipients. If you are listening to this board meeting and you know a graduating senior who might benefit from this scholarship, please, please follow up with your high school career center, principal, or counselor to connect your student to the MAPS scholarship application. Please help get this information to students who benefit the most from it. These scholarships are only one way that MAPS members contribute to our 4J community. One of the strongest values we hear from our MAPS members is to build community in each school and across the districts. The word "community" comes to us from the original Latin, literally breaking down to mean "come," which means "together," with "munis," which means "ready to be of service," as in a word municipality. MAPS employees strive to exemplify that word in this work. Our positions exist solely to help provide public educational services for students, and we want every student and staff in this district to feel a true sense of belonging in school communities that center mutual being, that hear the students, that hear the parents. Sometimes, our district does get stuck on differences of opinion. We're hearing some of that tonight. It is natural that that happens in life, but we do not have to remain stuck or at odds. The end of the day, our wish for MAPS is that we come back together and we always focus on the students. True community is coming together to be of service and to take care of each other, listening and talking together, so our differences don't divide us. Our differences can make us stronger when we hear each other, honor perspectives, and always, always come back together and serve as our students. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, Seth. Next up on our agenda is our comments and committee reports by individual board members.